I'm going to call our meeting to order and we'll begin with Lauralee calling the roll. Please.
Stu Boyd.
Here.
Denise Chapman.
Here.
Amy Doran. Dawn Kirk.
Here.
Barbara Cruz.
Here.
Alexandra Lessam.
Here.
Nancy Rumfelt.
Here.
Thank you Lauralee. The first item of business on our evening is the adoption of the agenda. Oh, no, I jumped. Sorry. Let's stand for the pledge. Yes, Nancy's going to lead us. Oh dear.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
And Stu, would you lead us in the pledge? I mean, in the mission statement.
Sure.
Just read it, okay?
The Thompson School District will be a school district that empowers challenges and inspires students, faculty, staff, parents, school leaders, and community members to learn, achieve, and excel.
Thank you, Stu, and thank you Nancy for doing the pledge for us. All right, now, first item will be adoption of the agenda. And it's for today, June 19th, 2024. Are there any changes to the agenda for tonight? Hearing none, I will take a motion to adopt the agenda as printed.
So moved.
I second.
Thank you. So that was Dawn and Nancy. And so Lauralee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran. Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfelt.
Aye.
All right, thank you, and it passes. The next item is the approval of the minutes, and we have three minutes to approve for tonight. So the first one will be for May 15th, 2024. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I will take a motion to approve the minutes for May 15th, 2024.
So moved.
Well, the chorus. I know Stu motioned, and who over here was it? Denise, okay, thank you. So Lauralee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran. Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfelt.
Aye.
Thank you, the motion is approved. The next minute approval will be for the special meeting we held on May 30th, 2024. Does anybody have any changes or corrections to the minutes of the special meeting from May 30th? Hearing none, I will take a motion to approve the minutes for May 30th, 2024.
So moved.
I'll second.
So that was Dawn and Nancy. And Lauralee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran. Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Alexandra, or Barbara Cruz, sorry.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfelt.
Aye.
Thank you, and the motion is approved. And the final one is for our study session on June 5th, 2024. Does anybody have any changes or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, and I will take a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Thank you.
Second.
That was Nancy and Denise. And Lauralee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran. Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfelt.
Aye.
And the motion is approved. All right, moving into public participation, I'll turn it over to Dr. Schaefer for his report.
Good evening, Madam President and members of the Board of Education. Welcome to our June 19th meeting. And before we roll into my report, I just want to acknowledge that today is the federal holiday of Juneteenth. And Juneteenth is a time where we take a moment to pause and reflect on the end of slavery and our commitment to equality, understanding, and justice for all. So I want to roll into my presentations, first slide. Congratulations to the class of 2024. On Memorial Day weekend, we officially celebrated the class of 2024 through our graduation ceremonies that were hosted at Mountain View High School, Berthold High School, and Blue Arena. Each of these graduates has worked extremely hard, and we wish them the best of luck in their future endeavors. If you are not able to attend the ceremonies this year, please visit the district's YouTube channel where you can watch a recording of each event. May 20th was First Responders' Day at Lincoln Elementary School. The students had the incredible opportunity to learn all about their local heroes, including firefighters, EMS, and law enforcement officials. It was another fantastic day at Lincoln Elementary, and we are very grateful to our first responder partners for making the opportunity possible. On May 23rd, Cottonwood Plains Elementary School's Destination Imagination Team, Los Ganadores, showcased their skills and creativity on a global stage at the DI Global Finals in Kansas City, Missouri. Competing against teams from 20 countries, they delivered their entire presentation in Spanish. The talented team placed 29th out of 35 teams in their division. We congratulate all on such a terrific achievement. On May 31st, Thompson School District hosted a Safety and Security Training Day at Mountain View High School for district staff members. The all-day event included education on a wide variety of topics, as well as simulated a safety incident. A special thank you goes out to our law enforcement partners at the Loveland Police Department and Limerick County Sheriff's Office for their support of this event. The first week after school was out, Loveland High School hosted a district-wide robotics camp for 4th and 5th graders. Our young innovators dove into the world of robotics, learning to design, build, and program their own robots. It's amazing to see their creativity and enthusiasm in action. Students are having a great time learning in a unique way this summer through TSD's Summer Scholars Program. Summer Scholars is a fun and creative summer learning program for students who are currently enrolled in grades kindergarten through 8th grade. Students are embarking on a journey of discovery from magical reading adventures to unlocking the wonders of math through exploration. In addition to the great Summer Scholars educational activities, students also receive two nutritious meals each day provided by our district's Nutrition Services staff. Now that the school year is officially wrapped up, I want to give a hearty thank you to all of our students, families, and staff members for all of their hard work. We accomplish so much as a district this year, and I'm very proud of each and every one of you. I hope you have a wonderful and restful summer break. So tonight, we want to recognize five seniors. We, this year, we hosted our Senior Snapshot Program, and it's designed to spotlight graduating high school seniors sharing their personal journey to that special day. During the week of graduation, one student was featured each day on the district's website, on social media, and also through a short video piece. And to view these five profiles, we ask you to visit our website located at tsd.org. If I'm not mistaken, I think our five seniors are here with us this evening, so I'd like to ask them to stand to be recognized, or we're actually going to also have you come forward so we can take a picture with you. Before we do that, I want to point out, on the sidewall over there underneath the clock is a brand-new feature. So what we've done this year is showcased and illuminated each of these five seniors, and they each represent one of our five areas of our Portrait of a Graduate. So very cool, great tribute to each of them. This will remain in our boardroom for the entire rest of this school year until we honor five seniors next year for the Class of 2025. But tonight, it's about the Class of 2024, and I'd like to ask the following individuals to please stand. We have Kate Schleg, is it Schlegel? Schlegel. We have Ari Everett Allen. Ari, are you here? Okay. Honey Salgado Para. We have Kaylee Williamson. And Dawson Leipolt. Okay, maybe three out of the five. So if the three of you would love to come forward, we'd like to take a picture with you, and congratulations on being our senior snapshots for this school year. Again, five very deserving students, and we hope you learn more about them. They're on our website, there's a video, and they're commemorated here in our boardroom. Finally, I would like to welcome Maddie Karanovich to come forward. We are excited to recommend Madeline, who goes by Maddie, Karanovich, as the new Assistant Director of Special Education. Maddie began her career in education as a special education teacher at Harrison High School in Colorado Springs. During her three years at Harrison, Maddie served as case manager for students with serious emotional disabilities, or SED, and Autism Spectrum Disorder, SAD, ASD. She also developed and implemented IEPs and intervention plans, and provided behavior support for students in special education. Ms. Karanovich moved to Falcon High School in Peyton, Colorado, where she continued her work in special education as an IEP specialist. During her two years there, Maddie reviewed caseloads and assigned case managers, developed and supervised the maintenance of the building compliance calendar, and collaborated in the creation of IEPs for students eligible for special education services. Maddie spent three months interning at Tennyson Center for Children as a special education coordinator, and here, Ms. Karanovich collaborated in the development of special education procedures that align with IDEA and the ESEA. We love acronyms in special education. She also provided peer administration consultation with school-based staff around special education procedures, special education law, and instructional best practices. Maddie has been with TSD as a special education coordinator for three years. In this role, she continued to develop, implement, and monitor special education procedures and programs, consistent and compatible with the IDEA, ECEA, and other laws and regulations. She also provided ongoing support and communication with staff, parents, and administration. Maddie received her bachelor's from CSU Pueblo and her master's from Grand Canyon University. She also has an Ed Specialist Degree in Educational Leadership, Director of Special Education from Arkansas State University, and is currently pursuing her PhD in Education Law from Liberty University in Virginia. Maddie, we are excited to have you in your new expanded role. Congratulations.
I just wanted to take a moment, Madam President, and Mr. Lord. Call for opportunity, and I'm excited to contribute.
Next, I'd like to welcome up Kevin Clark. Kevin is our District Athletics and Activities Director. He's going to provide us with an update for the end of the school year, and I think he's got a number of guests with him this evening.
Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board, thank you so much for having us this evening as we put a wrap on the 23-24 school year. And we'll start with, again, the connection to strive 2025, again, seeing our students achieve outside of the walls of the classroom. Celebrations, we'd like to start with, is John Sharp, who's here with us tonight, and I'll invite John to come up here. John was selected as the Colorado Middle School Athletic Director of the Year by the Colorado High School Athletic Directors Association. He was honored in April. And John, this is his last year at Walt Clark. As the athletic director, he'll continue, I believe, one more year in the classroom. And over 20 years as the athletic director, and yeah, we'll bring him back up at the end for a photo. Yeah, and maybe any questions they might have for you? Yeah. Yeah?
I would like to say that I have enjoyed every year out here coaching and athletic director at Walt Clark Middle School, and it's been a great experience in the Thompson School District teaching and coaching. And I think you guys did an amazing job hiring Kevin Clark here. And I said this at the presentation when we were down at the state, he does an amazing job working in the district, supporting his coaches, his athletic directors, and advocating for them throughout the district and throughout the state. He's doing a great job. For many years, really nobody paid much attention to middle school athletics, unless something bad happened, then we would hear about it or something. But for many years, but people really didn't notice at all, and he's done a great job of recognizing the importance of middle school athletics. So thank you so much, Kevin.
Thank you. I'll be inviting him back every meeting now, a little introduction for me, so appreciate that, John. Scott Pickard, who we thought was going to be here tonight, unfortunately had to cancel, but he was selected as the Colorado Chapter National Wrestling Hall of Fame. Coach Pickard retired from wrestling at Berthold, I believe, about five, six years ago, but 27 years leading the wrestling program at Berthold, and just a great honor for the work he did with our students at Berthold High School. Past events that we'd like to highlight is Dr. Schaefer running a 40-yard dash against a student at our Unified Sports Day. Yeah. I wasn't going to bring that up, but it was just a great day. It was the first time we tried something like that, and I know several of you were able to swing by, but you know, over 200 students and staff were able to participate that day. And again, just connect those students to other resources, other opportunities that are out there. We just had a great day. Girls' flag football will be, is Chassa approved, and we will have a team up and running at Mountain View High School in the fall of 2024. We will also be doing a kind of a kickoff event at Cat Tail Golf Course in the fall to lead into a piloting middle school golf throughout the district in the spring. And something, this isn't necessarily something real positive to report on, but we've noticed in the post-COVID, a huge decline in participation amongst boys' swimmers. This is at USA Swimming level, as well at the state level and within TSD. So there's no changes we're recommending now, but just wanted to bring that to your attention. Our team sizes this year, Mountain View is our largest school with 17, Thompson Valley with 11, and Loveland High with 12 swimmers. And we do not have a program at Berthold, so those young men can participate at another high school, but probably a decline, I'd say overall, of about 20-25% from kind of kind of pre-pandemic. So just put that on your radar. Loveland Activities, we are going to roll through this tonight because we do have some more special guests here from Berthold. But a couple of things to highlight on the activities, the Knowledge Bowl team at Loveland High School finished fourth in Class 5A, and they were able to raise over $2,000 for GiveNext. Athletically, the baseball team did qualify for the playoffs. Track and field had three athletes make the podium individually. And boys' swimming, they were able to qualify all three relays to state. Mountain View, their student council raised over $12,000 for Make-A-Wish, and definitely want to highlight that. And speech and debate, they had two students they sent to Bellevue, Nebraska for an individual national competition. Athletically, Mountain View did also qualify three, three of their relays, and they had a young man, J.J. Phillips, get third place in two events. Track and field, highlighted by Addison Rourke, she placed third in high jump. And that Unified Track Team, they sent eight, they sent 10 students to the state track meet. Thompson Valley Activities, Knowledge Bowl, I think Jaden Fitzpatrick, who you get to hear from, last, last time I was able to present, she'll be off to the, for the state knowledgeable, the regional performance, she'll be off to that, or sorry, the national tournament in Des Moines, Iowa. This is actually a different event than the one that Mountain View takes place in. Baseball team for Thompson Valley had a great season. They were able to host a regional. They were one of eight schools to get to do that, and they did qualify for the round of the state tournament. Girls' soccer team had a great season, finishing 12-1 and two ties. They were league champions, but unfortunately, lost in a shootout in the playoffs, and, but just an unbelievable season by Thompson Valley Soccer. Berthold Activities, the GiveNext program, they raised $6,000 that they were able to distribute to local charities. The esports program at Berthold has really taken off. Keith Lobdell has done a phenomenal job with that program, and the Knowledge Bowl placing third at state. Berthold Athletics, baseball program, very similar to Thompson Valley, were able to host. They went 22-1 on the season. They won the regional, went to the state tournament, won the first game of the state tournament, but then unfortunately, I mean, played some great games throughout, but just an unbelievable season for the baseball team. Unified Track, they sent five students to the state track meet, and at this time, I'm going to bring up the track athletes and Coach Blaine Voth and Jordan Jennings from Berthold High School. We have two state championship relays we'd like to honor tonight. You guys can start making your way up here, and we'll let Coach Voth talk about kind of the season and the state track meet they had. They finished second as a team on the girls' side, and the state championship relays that he can talk about. Keep in mind, this was the boys' cross-country team that finished second in the fall, and then in the spring, were able to win the distance relay. So we'll turn it over to you, Coach Voth.
Thank you. This group, first of all, the whole team, boys and girls, did a fantastic job this year. They worked hard, every practice came out, but just to place second in the state and only, the girls only four points behind a traditional team that has, you know, the boys have, or the girls have won 12 state titles at Classical Academy, and the boys eight. To place behind Classical Academy, only four points for our girls, says a lot about our girls' team and our boys being as young as they were to place third, and shows a lot of heart on their part also. So we have a lot of good things going, and, but with our four-by-eight state champions, you know, that was basically, we had two seniors on the team and two sophomores. And they, basically, I believe it was, was it eight minutes? Yeah, it was eight-minute, four-by-eight, and so if you look at that, that's, you know, that is a, if you do the math on that, so you're talking two laps each person. So that's basically two minutes or under for each person. So that's, that's a great, great legs on their part, and excellent job. And they, they won going away, it really wasn't even close. And then as far as the four-by-four girls' state champions with, they, they won it, the only one that wasn't able to be here was Sophia Sig, but she's only a freshman. But we had all juniors, and then of course, we had JC here, our senior on the team, and then Sophia was a freshman. But again, they broke their own school record in that one, just like the boys broke the school record in the four-by-eight. So they broke their own school record in the four-by-four on that, so, sorry. So they did an excellent job with that. And, and again, both, both races weren't even close. So they put in great effort, and they put in great training throughout the season to earn that. JC is going to be running at Illinois in the fall and the spring. So that's going to be exciting to watch her. And then a couple of other athletes that are up here, Paige Farnham is going to be going to Central Missouri to run track there. So that's going to be fun to watch her also, so.
Congratulations, you guys, yeah.
That concludes my presentation, unless there's any questions you have.
Questions, you guys? Just a photo.
Sounds good, thank you.
Can y'all smash in for me just a little bit? Yeah, I need to smash way more, sorry, yeah, there we go. Okay, good, all right, on three.
All right, we'll move on to our board committee reports, and we'll go ahead and let's start down by Denise and just work our way across, okay? Thanks, you guys, for coming.
Yeah, Board Committee Reports, I've been on part of the Technology Committee and as well as Communications, it's been a hard year for me to get to meetings, but have read some good things in the follow-up afterward, really impressed with what our Communications is doing around making it, all of our websites more accessible to everyone, so lots of work going on, and I'm always impressed and walk away from those meetings thinking, gosh, there is so much going on, and then with Kelly's Committee, the opportunity to do the Taking Tech Home for the summer, that was a real highlight this year, so that, you know, students have access to a device to use, and hopefully use to learn, you know, or keep or retain knowledge over the summer.
Thank you.
So I haven't had, there haven't been any committee meetings per se the last month, I get updates monthly from the Joint Insurance Committee meetings, or I guess the R&amp;R Insurance Utilization, which is always interesting to look through and see how that's going, and I don't really have a lot to report other than that.
Thank you.
I had a light committee here this year, based on some different structural changes, and so since this is ending my third year on the board, I just thought I'd give some general observations. There's been some really amazing accomplishments and achievements in this district, which we really excel at highlighting these celebrations, but as far as addressing problems brought to our attention, I would give us a failing grade, we simply pass these problems off to the staff and believe our job is done, it seems like the bureaucracy will in one minute blame the special ed kids as the problem, then seamlessly jump to the teachers, then jump over to the parents and say it's their fault, and in the meantime, everyone's suffering, the kids can't learn in the schools, the teachers, they have a difficult time in the classroom, it's not good for anyone. There's the cellphone policy that both teachers and parents want, I heard it again recently, and this district-wide policy would really bring much-needed improvement to the classroom, there are numerous studies that show cellphones improve learning, and better yet, improves the ability of kids to engage with each other and feel more welcomed and inclusive, and that seems like a really inexpensive way to accomplish that. I've seen grandparents, parents, community members vilified sometimes here, simply because they have different values and viewpoints, and so I just don't understand how we're honoring diversity and inclusion by doing this. What I've come to the conclusion is it kind of seems like the public education has kind of taken on the personality of the board, where it really wants everyone to assimilate and be the same, and if you refuse, then the system goes to work to discredit you, humiliate you, bully you, until you either assimilate or leave in shame. It's no wonder we don't have parents and teachers who want to speak out, or who want to be on the board, because who wants to subject themselves to this? We have serious problems that we need to address, and we need to find ways to work together instead of accusing somebody with new ideas or others, that they want to destroy education when the fact is they're not the ones that have been in charge of public education for decades. What does the future hold? I have no idea, but I can say I will not assimilate, and I will remain committed to making public education great again, and I will remain true to who I am, which is a proud Christian American who believes in the Constitution and this great constitutional republic that we have, that has given us all of our amazing liberties and freedom.
I'm going to go and let you guys go ahead, and I'm just going to finish up with about TEF.
What Barb asked us to do during our report this evening was to select one of the committees that we serve on with members of the community, including parents and other community members. I'm the board representative to the Legislative Relations Committee of the Colorado Association of School Boards, it's a long title, I give monthly reports to the board in that capacity, so I'm going to talk about the other committee that I'm pleased to serve on, I'm the board representative on the Matt Committee, that committee has met three times since the first of the year. This is the group that offers significant advice to the board, often recommendations related to issues involving growth, capital construction, et cetera. At the meetings that I've attended this year, needs have been discussed fully, we've discussed various growth options in our growing school population, particularly the school population in Berthod, I'm Berthod's representative on the Thompson School Board. We have discussed infrastructure needs, program needs, and updates, and at our last meeting, which was just a couple of weeks ago, the committee received information on the newly enacted Colorado School Finance Act, and also we reviewed capital needs. This is a committee that's very important in the life of the Thompson School District, involves parents and other community members, some of whom have been in the community for many years, others are fairly recent, they come to these Master Planning Committee meetings with ideas, with input from themselves and other members of the community, and help the district make decisions involving growth and capital needs, infrastructure, et cetera, and I'm pleased and honored to be the board member who's the representative on this committee.
So I will just touch on the Security and Emergency Management Committee, we meet every month throughout the school year, and you saw a picture in the superintendent's report from this end-of-year activity that was done, and that was something that was planned, I don't know, nine months or so this year that we were working on that, and different inputs into it, it was something where staff had the opportunity to opt in for the training, or the exercise, or both, which was, I think, a really great thing to get to have the opportunity, we had just gotten some emails right before our last meeting around people wondering what we were doing for those kind of drills, and to know that we had some training exercises to go along with the, the new processes and standards that we've been creating all year is pretty great. I also wanted to talk about that committee because we've, we have law enforcement partners come to that meeting every month, we usually have, I don't know, a quarter or more of the meeting be our law enforcement partners who are coming, and throughout the year, and especially in our last meeting, there were multiple of those partners who made the comment just of how nice it is to have partners like us who are really thinking about how are we addressing the challenges that we have, and partnering together to figure those solutions out, and then through work, I actually saw a couple people who are related to law enforcement as well, who said some, some similar sentiments, and so it's just really nice to hear that throughout, you know, multiple touchpoints of how we've really came at these challenges that have been brought in front of us with the professionals who exist throughout our area to figure out what can we do, and so even though the challenges persist, because we're working with humans, and that's in and of itself something that's constantly changing, we do have some really great partnerships who are excited about figuring out how do we do what we need to do, and how do we address the needs, and so I just really appreciated hearing that over and over again, and I think that that's a nice way to summarize some of the work that we've been doing to address some of these challenges that exist.
I'm going to talk a little bit about the Thompson Education Foundation, that's the one committee that I've been able to get to, we haven't had the other committees since school was out, so, and we had, the TEF is what it's referred to, it's Thompson Education Foundation, and we met yesterday, and even though it's summer, it is probably our busiest time for TEF, we have a variety of things going on right now, and a lot of these are accessed through the website for Thompson Education Foundation, but in July, we have an evening where there's a concert, I think it's out at, oh, what we refer to as the Outlet Mall, I think that's where the concert is, out in that area, you'll find the information definitely on the website. It's also the time when we do our backpacks for the kids, part of the program, helping kids succeed, and we stuff the backpacks and get them all delivered to the schools in July. August 1st is, 2nd this year is the golf tournament sponsored by the Stanley Shear Foundation that's held up at, near Annaboot, I think is where it is, correct? And then they're also doing peaches right now, so you can access the peaches, peaches form right online as far as ordering peaches. And any event that's planned in the, in September is, those of you that have been in the district a long time or been around a long time will appreciate Moonlighting Teachers, and Moonlighting Teachers is basically made up of retired teachers who do sort of a lot of songs and spoofs on what happens in the educational world, which is kind of, it's actually happening for three nights in September, so it's something to look forward to. Again, all are accessed on the TEF, TEF website, which is always busy, they have lots going on. This concludes our board and committee reports, so we'll move on to public comment, and I'm going to turn that over to Don to read the teachers.
Because the board wants to hear the viewpoints of the public, and also needs to conduct its business in an orderly and efficient manner, it will schedule time during its regular board meetings for brief comments and questions from the public. The board will set a time for public participation prior to the business portion of the meeting, the time for each speaker will be limited to three minutes, and each individual will only be recognized once. If there are a large number of speakers, the board may elect to take comments for one hour before the business meeting and conclude public comment after the business meeting. Public comments and questions at a regular meeting may deal with any topics related to the board's conduct of the schools. Speakers may offer such criticism of school operations and programs as concerns them, but are encouraged to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Personnel matters will be discussed in executive session. And then when you start speaking, the green light will go on, when you have 30 seconds left, the yellow light will come on, and then when you're out of time, it will flash red, and it will keep beeping, and it is time to get done. First up this evening, we have Robert Rumfeld.
My name's Robert Rumfeld, resident of Loveland, 5506 Janet Drive. Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board, I appreciate this opportunity to speak. Tonight, I'd like to talk a little bit about dereliction of duty. Dereliction of duty is a person's purposeful or accidental failure to perform an obligation without a valid excuse, especially an obligation attached to their job. With few exceptions, this board has been derelict in its responsibilities to students, parents, teachers, staff, and the community. This board has refused to address reports of systemic bullying and violence in the classroom, reports of inappropriate sexual behavior by some students, reports that district staff have failed, or are not being allowed to communicate the truth to parents, reports of reprisals against teachers, parents, and staff who have come forward and exposed the corruption. Over 500 teachers signed a petition urging the district to act on out-of-control student behavior in the classroom, out-of-control behavior that includes violence. So it's as if the petition never happened, it's never been fully addressed. Moreover, this board has steadfastly refused to form a budget committee which would foster real accountability in the district's fiduciary responsibilities, no reflection on the staff. This is a dereliction of duty, in my opinion. Teachers and parents are looking for solutions, and they want to work together, but the educational bureaucracy keeps interfering in this relationship, and has refused to create an environment of cooperation. So to summarize, Thompson School District has taken up the position of defending the indefensible while preparing to ask the community for more money.
Sharon Penny.
Dr. Schaefer, members of the board, Madam President. I taught in Denver area, in a Denver area school until I retired, and I considered it a rather idyllic situation. My school taught the core subjects of reading, math, history, and standard, traditional sciences, et cetera. Strong academics, high expectations, and no-nonsense A-to-F grading scales were the norm. My school also had a no-secrets, full transparency policy, parents could easily view all curriculum at any time, they could drop in unannounced, sit in on lessons, and volunteer in classrooms. Any situation with students, whether it was disciplinary, medical, or emotional, was immediately brought to parents' attention. The school believed that parents are the primary educators of children, and the school was there to help. They understood, the understood philosophy was that children belong to their parents who have a lifelong vested interest in them. The working relationship between administrators, teachers, parents, and students was really quite special. You might guess that I was not teaching in the public system. The reporter Harold has reported disappointing information about TSD schools, very low test scores, schools operating at 40% capacity, though there are plenty of children in the area, classrooms out of control with teachers at their wits' end. Why? Why? I have a suggestion. Would you consider hiring an individual who would contact every parent who has withdrawn a child since January, but who still lives in the area? Ask one simple, open-ended question. Why did you withdraw your child? Categorize the answers. What were their concerns, frustrations, or completely benign reasons? Home schools, private schools, and charter schools in northern Colorado are booming. Why is that? There are reasons, some of which I've alluded to and others which parents could describe. My hope is that you would have a willingness to contact families, consider their observations, and then boldly discuss what action might be warranted. Guiding the ship, a ship the size of Thompson School District, is a ponderous task. Thank you for listening to this suggestion.
Good evening, President Cruz, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer. Lori Gobel, resident here in Loveland. And I'm standing before you here as a certified Constitution coach who would like to offer our services for Constitution Day. I was here last year and brought up the necessary requirement that is actually part of federal law, that each public school does participate in, and for the classrooms to participate in Constitution Day and teach the Constitution. We have curriculum, because I know the teachers are very much, a lot of times, are overwhelmed when you try, when you add something else to their plate. But in light of this, I would like to offer our help as best as we can to come in and assist the teachers in that aspect. The reason I'm ringing this before you this evening is under Curriculum Development, it says the Board of Education is required by the state to determine the educational programs to be carried on in the schools of the district, directly from your website. Another great thing that is happening in regards to Constitution Day is there's going to be a Constitution Day contest. And this is being sponsored by Weld County Commissioner Lori Sein, but it's open to all the children here in northern Colorado. And I think this would be a great spark to help get children and the teachers excited about this. They're going to be elementary, middle, and high school, in the divisions, and the categories are essay, poetry, and art. Talk about a diverse way to address this. And the question for this year is what are the essential ingredients needed for liberty? How were they intentionally embedded in the design of the United States Constitution? And as I stated before, that on September 17th, that is the day, or sometime during that week, for the classrooms to get involved and be, for the children to be taught about the Constitution. So I will be looking forward to either you contacting me as to how we can help you. I will leave the flyer here with you all, so you can pass along if you need me to email a copy. I'm more than happy to do that. And I truly look forward to hearing in October from Dr. Schaefer on the great participation that will be had during, for Constitution Day, the activities and the programs that are being done. And then hopefully maybe even some of the winners will be announced that evening that will be right here from T S D. So thank you for your attention.
Good evening, Dr. Schaefer, Madam President, and members of the board. My name is Susan Harding, a Loveland resident and a 37-year veteran music teacher, like you all pointed out to me in April, in the Thompson School District. During this time, I've been a member of the Encounters with Music Trust Fund Committee, known as E W M. Margaret Foot created this fund with the intent that it should provide music enrichment opportunities for T S D students. It is clearly stated that the fund should not replace the funding responsibilities of the district. For many years on these committees, I have seen how hard the T S D music teachers work to provide additional opportunities for T S D students. It's also very apparent that as a district, we do not fully fund music education with resources and staffing. This year alone, each and every high school music program asked for staffing support, ranging from clinicians, sectional coaches, winter percussion coaches, choreographers, as well as drill designers for marching shows. These requests for extra staffing for E W M were $53,400. The amount of money for all music teachers to spend from this fund is set at $30,000 per year for the 28 schools to share, based on submitted requests. As you can see, this does not cover the needs for the T S D music programs, and nor should it. This year's total requests for the E W M fund were greater than $80,000. Every year, many teachers request money to provide student enrichment by attending concerts, participating in festivals, and contests. They request money for the fees as well as transportation, since their budgets do not cover these expenses. Students benefit from all these programs, and they have been and currently work on a shoestring budget and staffing, many of which are events that make you, as school board, highlight in your opening statements, the musicals, the concerts, and marching band competitions. T S D produces quality, state-winning music opportunities for our students, and it's time to fund them with a dollar amount that matches this excellence. I also would like to recommend that these positions could be added as extra-duty contracts or even like a para-paid position. That would help immensely. Thank you.
Madam President, members of the board. I am Haley Jory. I am a resident of Loveland. I, along with other parents, spoke at last month's board meeting concerning the issue with physical contact and violence at Big Thompson Elementary. Multiple families have removed their children from the school, with several other considering doing so. Some have opted to transfer their children to other districts due to the lack of belief that the district intends to address the problem in a meaningful way. Since sharing our concerns last month, there has been little follow-up on how this issue will be addressed. As parents, it never occurred to us that we would have to push this to a resolution after problems as serious as sexual assaults and a broken bone had occurred. The assumption by now, the problem has surfaced itself so obviously that the district would take clear and immediate action to prevent things like this from occurring again. The fact that parents are having to work so hard to drive action around an obviously dangerous problem illustrates what a widespread and unaddressed issue this is within the Thompson School District. There is a need for transparency around what the district is doing and intends to do to address this crisis. I request to be informed on the investigative process in order to gauge if my children will be safe continuing their education in this district. I request that someone from the district follow up with me and other concerned parents on what we need to do to stay apprised of what actions are being taken by the district. I also request to be informed if Child Protective Services and law enforcement have been notified of the ongoing issues, as it includes several instances of child abuse, and what role they will play in navigating it. Finally, I would like to request a report on what actions are being taken to address this issue, that that report be made public.
My name is Melissa Daniels. We reside in Detroit, Colorado. I have two boys in the Thompson Valley School District, and I'd like to discuss student safety at Big Thompson. Our oldest situation isn't nearly as horrifying as those discussed in the last board meeting, but it can quickly escalate. I homeschooled Killian for kindergarten, after in 2020, he broke his back and his pelvis and underwent surgery for a rare kidney condition, as I wasn't ready to send him to school. In 2022, I sent him to Big T for first grade, which was extremely hard on me, given his situation. The bullying hit what I would consider more of assault this year. In January, my once super energetic and eager-to-learn kid was frequently making excuses to stay home. Come to find out, one kid in particular has been punching him on his head, his chest, shoving him to the ground to the point where he sprays his knees and kicks his ankles till he falls down and can't get up. Killian tells me that this kid waits till he's alone to do this. Due to my son's kidney condition, this can become extremely dangerous if he is injured in his abdominal area, which is noted in his file, so you'd think the school would take cases that involve medically high-risk kids more seriously. It wasn't till Killian found out a good friend was getting hurt by the same kid that he told me what's been going on. I called the school to schedule a meeting with Mrs. Walgast, where, one, I was told that unless Killian tells the staff himself, there's nothing to be done, even if I called the school about what he tells me. And, two, I only received a phone call back from Mrs. Walgast hours later to discuss the procedures they take when it comes to bullying. After watching the board meeting, my husband went in the next morning to meet with Mrs. Walgast about the safety of our child. The school secretary, without any hesitation, told my husband that Mrs. Walgast was too busy to meet with him, but might be able to next week. That led to Killian being pulled from school. After we met with Mrs. Walgast and Killian's teachers, he did return to school, but once Killian realized that, he had a mental breakdown, taking his dad, myself, and my mom to calm him down. I've been emailed a detailed plan of what we discussed in our meeting and how things will be moving forward. After speaking with other parents and seeing the last board meeting, I have little faith that this will be a result. Due to this, I've felt the need to spend hundreds of dollars a month for my boys to learn Krasnagash, a martial art, so they can defend themselves, and mostly for Killian to gain his confidence back, which was stripped from him this year. These situations, no matter how minor they may seem, need to be handled before they escalate to the situations brought up in past meetings. This all unfolded at the end of the school year, so Mrs. Walgast has yet to prove herself, but both my husband and I have major concerns now. I'm not going to sit back and wait to see if our son's situation is going to be handled when this school has a bad track record of dealing with major bullying. So I will leave you all with this. What is the point of having these board meetings and allowing parents to voice our concerns when little to nothing is going to be done? My number is 970-631-7334, if needed to be contracted. Thank you.
Stephanie Dean. I live in Loveland, and my topic tonight is regarding staffing. Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, and members of the board, calling in tonight to continue the conversation about staffing in the Thompson School District. First, I would like to say thank you for your efforts to stabilize the staffing numbers at Big Thompson Elementary for the 2024-2025 school year. I am grateful for your partnership and attention to this matter, and I believe that we will see positive effects on student behavior and academic achievement. I would ask that we continue to look at ways we can support the staffing and learning needs of students in our buildings across the district. One position that is still needed in multiple buildings, including Big Thompson Elementary, is an interventionist. I am asking the board and district to make this role a standard position in every building, and not one that varies, just like the district has done in the past with elementary school counselors. The interventionist role is critical to meeting the needs of our diverse learning population and is a key staff member who is able to help boost students' academic growth through targeted intervention. I know that funding these roles is complicated, and I would ask that the board vote in favor of putting the proposed bond and special mill levy initiative on the ballot this coming August. Funds from these will allow necessary building, maintenance, expansion, and special projects to be completed, freeing up funds to hire interventionists and other support staff in our schools. Together, these things enable our schools to be places where our students feel safe, can have their needs met, and the staff feel supported. Thank you for your time and consideration. I look forward to continuing to partner with you. You can reach me back at 816-721-2261. Thanks.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, and members of the board. My name is Lauren Haug. I am the mother of three students in the district at Big Thompson Elementary School, and I'm calling in today to address the proposed bond and special mill that was presented to the board earlier this month. I would like to ask you, our board members, to vote to approve these ballot initiatives for the 2024 election cycle. The money from the bond will go toward critical building improvements, including providing air conditioning to our many schools that lack it. It will also give our district the ability to make space for the growing student population in the town of Berthoud. The bond will also provide critical dollars to expand our career in technical education pathways at the Thompson Career Campus. This change will greatly impact the success of our students as they graduate from high school and go out into the workforce. Finally, I am also asking that the board approve the proposed special mill levy, as this money will free up other financial resources within our district's budget and will allow for the much-needed increase in teacher and staff salaries, and will allow for additional critical staff positions at schools throughout the district. Thank you so much for the work that you do for our students and for our community, and have a great evening.
This concludes our public participation. All right. Our next piece is moving into action consent items. And these are items that the board has previewed in our study session, and so we've bundled them together to, for approval. First of all, is there anything anybody wants removed before we begin this? Okay. What I'll do is, we do have one, gifts and donation that will be read, and I'll read through all of the items, and then we'll proceed from there. I'll go ahead and read, and then we'll get the donation. I think it's Denise is doing it, correct? Okay. So this is, 5.1 is the approval of personnel, extra-duty, and coaching recommendations. 5.2 is the approval of expenditures over $50,000. 5.3 is the approval of gifts and donations. 5.4 is the approval of Head Start Grant. 5.5 is the approval of the Head Start Cost of Living Adjustment, known as COLA, and Quality Improvement, U I for Funding for 2023-2024. 5.6 is the approval of Energy Performance Contract Extension. 5.7 is the approval of the project budget and contracts for Thompson Career Center Expansion Update. 5.8 is the approval of the Second Reading Policy, J H, J H A, J H B A, Student Absences and Excuses. So we'll start with the reading of the donations.
Right. In alignment with Strive 2025, 4.2, assets are properly inventoried, maintained, and used appropriately without waste. 4.3, and provide transparency in the use of resources. So the purpose of this is that the school board policy states that gifts and donations over $1,000 need to be approved by the Board of Education. Gifts and donations below are above that amount, and then here's the purpose for them. We have a $1,500 donation for percussion rental for the Mountain View High School Band Program from the Loveland Concert Band. A $30,000 donation for athletics for Loveland High School from Chris Gebhardt and Subaru of Loveland. And a gift of golf clubs valued at approximately $10,000 for the startup of middle school golf from Pat Robenstein.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We appreciate all of those donations. Are there any changes or discussion, any items you have discussion on for this? Otherwise, I will take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, yeah. First from Dawn, a second from Stu. Is there any further discussion? I'd ask that again, but I'll just, don't want to miss anybody. All right, Laura Litt, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessum.
Aye.
Nancy Rumfeld.
Aye.
All right, thank you, and the motion passes. So don't think I'm crazy when I say it's public participation again, but it is right now. But this is strictly for the budget, so it's 2024-2025 Budget Public Hearing. So I'm going to invite Gordon up for any comments, and then we'll see if there's any other public participation comments.
Thank you, Madam President.
And I won't limit you to three minutes.
It'll be much briefer than that. Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board, Gordon Jones, Chief Financial Officer for the district. This is- This is something that is somewhat unique to Thompson School District, I believe, where we actually have a separate time set aside for public comment or any comments that anybody may have about the budget process, the figures, the reporting, any of those types of things. It is called for in statute that we notify the public that the budget is available for inspection, which has been done. The budget has been, the proposed budget has been posted on the district website, and this is the opportunity for the public to speak specifically to the budget should there be any comments.
Okay. Are there any comments for budget participation? I don't hear any. So we can move on, correct? All right. So moving on to discussion action items that we have tonight, the first one is, I'm going to invite Gordon back, it's the Approval of the State of Colorado Interest-Free Cash Flow Loan Program Resolution. And do I read this before or after you've had your comment?
After would be appropriate, I believe. I will try to be brief in my comments on this as well. Hopefully, the board, first of all, thank you, Madam President, board, Dr. Schaefer again. This hopefully is familiar to the board. It's a program that the district has participated in over the last five or six years. Because a increasing amount of our funding, both from the local share of the School Finance Act and from mill levy overrides, comes from property taxation that's done locally, those collections take place primarily, they do take place, we receive funding for that in March, May, and June each year. But each year, the expenditures of the district are more uniform throughout the 12 months of the year. So this is a mechanism that the state legislature put in place, a program that districts can participate in on an interest-free basis to help with cash flow, with that loan being paid back as soon as possible with the tax revenue that we receive in March, May, and June. Typically, whatever we borrow, we've paid back immediately in March with the first installment of property taxes. One slight difference this year is a piece of legislation that was passed in the last legislative session, Senate Bill 24-017, which is, gives districts the option of, rather than getting 1/12 of the school finance portion, the state portion of our School Finance Act revenue, we can elect to receive that over nine months, the nine months that we don't have significant property tax revenue. So that means March, May, and June, again, we would get 1/9 rather than 1/12 of our total state share from school finance over those nine months, and nothing but the property taxes in the other three months. The district has elected to participate in that program this year. We had to do, as we always do, to participate in cash flow, budgeted or estimated cash flow for the coming year. In the memo, you can see the dollar amounts of what's been borrowed previously in the previous years, and after working with the state officials to prepare the cash flow, which is attached as Exhibit B on the agenda, the ask for the board is consideration of adoption of the borrowing resolution of $30 million to participate in this program for the 24-25 fiscal year.
Okay. Are there questions for Gordon over this? All right. I'm sorry, but there's a long page that has to be read aloud. So I'm going to read it and take a nap if you need to. A resolution authorizing the participation by the district in the State Treasurer's Interest-Free Loan Program for Colorado School Districts and borrowing under such programming in an aggregate principal amount up to $30 million. Establishing the terms and provisions of loans to the district pursuant to such program, providing for the payment of and security for such loans, and authorizing the execution, delivery, and acceptance of documents in connection with the loans. Getting smaller print. Whereas, the district is a school district, political subdivision and body corporate newly organized and existing under the laws of the state, capitalized terms, and these brambles shall have the meaning set forth in Section 1.02 of this resolution, except as otherwise indicated. And, whereas, the district expects to receive taxes and the revenues for fiscal year 2024-25 that are to be credited to the General Fund of the district. And, whereas, the district has estimated the anticipated taxes and other revenues to be credited to the General Fund and the budget expenditures to be made from the General Fund in fiscal year 2024-25, and has concluded that cash flow management problems will occur during such period because the taxes will not be received in time to pay the district's projected budgeted expenses. And whereas, pursuant to the loan program statutes and upon approval of an application to participate, the State Treasurer is to make available to the state school districts in any month of the budget year interest-free loans and the proceeds of loan program notes to alleviate cash flow deficits. And whereas, no loan can be made to the district unless the district has demonstrated through the submission of actual or projected financial or budgetary statements required by the State Treasurer, that a general fund cash deficit will exist for the month in which the loan is to be made, and that the district has the ability to repay the loan by Wednesday, June 25 of 2025. And whereas, in order to receive an interest-free loan, the Chief Financial Officer of the district and the district superintendent must present a request to the board to participate in the loan program and to have loan program notes issued on its behalf. And the board must approve or disapprove by majority vote, participation of the district in the loan program. And whereas, upon approval by the board, the authorized officers must certify to the State Treasurer the aggregate amount of loan program notes, which are to be issued by the State Treasurer on behalf of the district, and therefore, the board is not required to give approval for an interest-free loan made from proceeds of the loan program notes up to the maximum principal amount. And whereas, the board has found and determined that participating in the loan program is in the best interest of the district and its residents to alleviate its cash flow deficits, and that the district should become a participant under the loan program. So we have that piece taken care of, so we can now move on to discussion?
Discussion.
Are there questions or discussions you might have? None? All right. I would take a motion to approve the State of Colorado Interest-Free Loan Cash, let me try that again, from the State of Colorado Interest-Free Cash Flow Loan Program Resolution. So I would take a motion from somebody.
So moved. I'll second.
Okay. That was Alexandra? Oh, thank you. And Nancy. So I have a first from Alexandra, a second from Nancy. Are there any further discussions regarding this? Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran. Don Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessum.
Aye.
And Nancy Rumfeld.
Aye.
All right. The motion passes, and we'll now move on to 7.2, which is the Approval of Resolution of Budget Adoption for 2024-2025. Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer. This is a request of the board for the culmination of the budget process that began last December, actually, and in earnest in January. The board has, I appreciate the board's attention over the last six months, as different updates in the scaffolded approach to building the budget from a revenue perspective, the multifaceted revenue that we have, to then FTE cost, non-FTE costs, and pulling all those pieces together. The board, the proposed budget was presented to the board at the work session two weeks ago, and I will say the document that is posted for the public's consumption and for the board's consideration this evening has some very minor changes to it that have come about based on some research on the questions that have been asked from an RFI standpoint, and they have nothing to do with the numbers, it's only on descriptions. So I think there's five line items in the entire 40 pages of the document that were changed to more accurately and informationally project what that line item is. So it's descriptions or titles only that have been changed, and nothing to the dollar amounts. The budget includes, the first part of the budget deck is the general fund related, and the second half is all of the other funds that the district maintains. There's a list of what each of those funds are and what their purposes are, and there's other details, revenues and expenditures for all of the various programs of those special funds as well. I'd be glad to answer any questions for the board that I could, as I stand in front of this body, not necessarily these members, and the superintendent, but for, hard to believe, the 10th year, 10th time that I've stood asking for consideration of adoption of the budget. And I'd be remiss if I did not say, this is not my budget, this is the district's budget, and this is, receives input from a lot of people, and there's a lot of work that goes into this. So special thanks on my, on the business services team. Rusty Williams is our Director of Accounting and Reporting, has had a significant role in this. Sherri Shea, our accountant in the district, as well as working with, starting in the fall, the association and HR in a cross-functional team for a budget study team from a compensation standpoint, something we've instituted in the last couple years that is, in my opinion, has really paid good dividends when it comes time to negotiations. So, again, a lot of people that have brought this document together, I just have the privilege of standing in front of you, being able to answer any questions you may have and asking for consideration of adoption.
Dr. Schaefer.
And I want to acknowledge Gordon Jones, our Chief Financial Officer. I know he's busy thinking everyone well-deservedly on his team, but you can be certain that Gordon has spent hours, days, weeks, months on this as significant labor, and he has really taken great care in terms of accuracy and responsiveness. So Gordon, thank you for your dedication and hard work as well.
Thank you.
We all agree with that, yes. Are there questions that people have? Questions?
I have a couple, but I have a couple motions to put with them, so if there's people that have questions, they could, I would think that they could go before me.
Should I have the resolution read at this point before Nancy, or should we follow through with that?
I would suggest having the further discussion before asking for the resolution of adoption in case there are changes that the board would desire.
Nancy?
First, Gordon, I really, again, appreciate, you know, I know every year I give you, submit RFIs with questions and so forth, but this is my third year going through this process, and so I'm still of the belief that we should have a board budget committee. We are voting on a budget that we are, it's our fiduciary legal responsibility to do so, and while I appreciate all the work that your staff does, the board is ultimately responsible for the governance and how this district spends its money. And so you have situations where the city council, they meet for months, the county commissioners meet for months, the state legislature meets for months, working in conjunction with staff and together collaborating on what the spending priorities are. We do not do that. We get the budget in May for a sneak peek, the big deep dive in June, and then we vote on it. I think we just do a disservice to ourselves and the taxpayers. I was very surprised to hear about the music program, I admit that. I was told that the music would be a priority, and it was not. So therefore, I would like to move that the board authorizes and creates a budget advisory committee with at least one board member, and the committee will meet at least once per month during the school year.
Hearing none. Let's...
I guess I don't see how that's related to approval of this budget, per se. Like, I don't necessarily disagree with the idea, but I don't see that that's...
That it fits in right now.
That it fits in right here.
I would say that the budget committee is directly related to what would come out of this to spend the money, and that's why I'm proposing this now. I've brought it up before, so I'm bringing it up again.
I am going to ask that we put this table this until when we are, Dr. Schaefer, do you have something?
Well, there's a motion, so first, do you determine if there's going to be a second? Because you can't dismiss the motion, so there's a motion. So there'll either be a second, and if there's a second, then there can be a discussion and then a vote.
So there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Hearing none. The motion fails. Thank you. Welcome to bring it up at another point, but not, not over this discussion of the budget.
Sure.
All right. I think it's Alexandra that has the page to read for us. Thank you. It's the Resolution Regarding...
Resolution of Budget Adoption.
Yeah. Resolution of Budget Adoption, 2024-25 Budget. Resolution of Budget Adoption. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Thompson School District R2J in Laramo County, Colorado, adopt for the fiscal year July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025, the proposed budget entitled Proposed 2024-25 Budget, including designated reserves as indicated in the proposed budget for multi-year fiscal agreements, emergencies, and all other requirements necessary to comply with Article 10, Section 20 of the Colorado State Constitution. The board also adopts the appropriation, which will continue capital leases on the 800 South Taft Building Lease, the High Plains School Lease, and the Bus Lease. Resolution Regarding the Measure Important Features of the Budget. The budget ensures that Thompson School District R2J holds unrestricted Tabor emergency cash reserves in the general fund of $6,506,610, 3.0% of fiscal year spending. The Board of Education of the Thompson School District R2J in Laramo County, Colorado, is adopting a budget prepared using GAAP on a modified accrual basis of accounting. In preparing this budget, Thompson School District R2J has accrued for previous financial commitments, including but not limited to salary accruals and agreements for the purchase of materials and services. The Board of Education has reviewed the projected fund balances indicated in the proposed 2024-25 budget and authorized the use of beginning fund balances as required. Be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Thompson School District R2J in Laramo County, Colorado, adopt the proposed 2024-25 budget and its key features as described in the information provided.
Thank you, Alexandra. All right. I will take a motion to approve the Resolution of Budget Adoption for 2024-2025.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first from Stu, a second from Dawn. Laura Lee, please call the, oh, discussion, yes, discussion. No discussion?
I have.
Okay.
I would just say that it is the board's legal fiduciary responsibility to know what's in the budget, to establish the priorities. It is not the job of the staff to establish the spending priorities. In conjunction with the superintendent, we are to govern this district. There's no input from the board, or very little. We don't decide on the spending priorities. In my opinion, there is no board accountability. Without a budget committee, and given what's in here, and trying to put this together and understand it in a very short amount of time, I, I will once again be voting no on the budget.
Any other comments? Laura Lee, please call the, oh, discussion, yes, discussion. Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd?
Aye.
Denise Chapman?
Aye.
Amy Doran? Don Kirk?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam?
Aye.
Nancy Rumfelt?
No.
All right, 7.3. Oh. The motion passes five to one. Approval of the resolution, 7.3, approval of the resolution of appropriation 2024-2025 budget. Gordon?
Thank you again, Madam President. This resolution is one of the three that is being asked for consideration this evening. The district is not allowed to expend funds unless they are appropriated by the board. So the budget details what those expenditures are assumed or estimated to be, and this appropriates the, those funds, allows the district the opportunity to make expenditures on behalf of the district.
Right. Any questions for Gordon over this? And I think Don has this one to read.
Be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Thompson School District R2J in Laramo County, Colorado, that the amounts shown in the following schedule should be appropriated to each fund as specified in the 2024-2025 proposed budget, and that all lease purchase agreements in effect be renewed for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025. The Board of Education also authorizes the transfer of monies as specified in the proposed budget in the amount of $1,972,766 from the general fund to the federal grants fund, $26,500; the state and local grants fund, $355,000; the fee-supported fund, $315,050; and the capital projects fund, $1,276,216.
Thank you, Don. All right. Any questions, discussions? All right. I will take a motion to approve the resolution of the appropriation of 2024-2025 budget.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. But that was Alexandra.
Yes.
It was Don and Alexandra. All right. Discussion? Hearing none. Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd?
Aye.
Denise Chapman?
Aye.
Amy Doran? Don Kirk?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam?
Aye.
Nancy Rumfelt?
No.
The motion passes five to one. And then 7.4, which is the approval of resolution of use of beginning fund balance for 2024-2025 budget. Gordon?
Thank you, Madam President. This is the third of the resolutions being asked for consideration. There's fund balance that is carried forward or maintained across all of the various funds that the district maintains. From time to time, there are necessary items and very practical reasons why use of beginning fund balance is appropriate. One example would be one of the funds that we have, Fund, I'm sorry, it's not 41. The, you would think after that brash statement of ten years doing this, I would know that the Bond Redemption Fund would be one of those items. Building Fund is another, Fund 41, where the proceeds from the bond in 2018 that went into that, the expectation would be that we spend down, the district spends down that balance each year. This resolution is to do just that. You can see the various funds listed that call for a use of beginning fund balance. That's what this resolution is, asking for permission to spend from beginning fund balance.
Questions for Gordon over this one? I think Stu is our reader this time.
I am. Before I read this, however, I was, I actually was prepared to say what I'm going to say in regard to public participation, item 6.1. But since there wasn't any, since there were no questions or comments, I'm going to take just a minute to say what I would have said in conjunction with that. Those in attendance and those who are viewing or listening to the meeting may have been surprised that there were no commenters, that there were no questions on 6.1, which was the budget public hearing part of the agenda. I think that was probably because, as an example of the district's transparency, you hosted a meeting a couple of weeks ago that was posted on the district website and perhaps in other ways as well, inviting people to come to an explanation of the budget, to be able to ask questions, et cetera. Individuals did come to that meeting. And so that perhaps is an explanation of why there weren't any questions or comments during 6.1. So I just thought I would mention that because it is an example of the district's transparency. All right. Now, reading the resolution of use of beginning fund balances. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Thompson School District R2J in Laramo County, Colorado, hereby authorizes the use of beginning fund balances in budget year 2024-25 as shown below. The general fund, $2,990,794 to cover collective excess expenditures over the 2024-25 revenues. The Board of Education is monitoring fund balance and anticipates reduction of future year's expenditures as necessary to maintain an adequate reserve balance. Nutrition Services Fund, $452,300 for the purposes of purchase of additional commodities and other food supplies, as well as meal service, consumable products, due to an increase in the number of meals expected to be served because of the Healthy School Meals for All legislation, which was Senate Bill 23-221, that allows all Colorado students to eat free of charge. Increased salary and benefit costs associated with preparation of increased meal counts and the purchase of additional equipment to assist with higher meal volumes is also anticipated. Moving to Student Activities, $100 for the purpose of investment of reserves from self-funded athletic programs and student activity funds, primarily for purchase services, supplies, and field trips. Land Reserve, $1,958,741 for investment in potential land and water purchases, as well as capital projects associated with real estate from fund balance carried forward from prior year payment in lieu of receipts from developers. These funds are appropriated, but potential land or water purchases have not been specifically designated. Any appropriated amount not spent in the 2024-25 fiscal year will carry forward to the 25-26 beginning fund balance. Fee-supported Fund, $64,050 for systematic planned spending for facility rental-related, pardon me, for facility rental-related expenditures, operation of district aquatics facilities, and instructional classroom fees from fund balance carried forward from prior years. Building Fund, $2,295,926 for continued planned spending of a portion of the proceeds associated with the $149 million general obligation bond issuance in January of 2019. It's anticipated that proceeds in this fund from the 28-Bond Initiative will be fully expended by the end of fiscal year '25. Capital Projects Fund, $1,066,446 in 2024-25 for one-time carryover projects and facilities maintenance, transportation, and technology that are largely planned for the summer months. And I'm sorry to tell you, there's only one more. Educational Memorial Trust, $32,226 for scholarship opportunities funded from prior year's contributions. The district serves strictly as a fiduciary of these funds.
Any questions over any of that that was... All right. I will take a motion to approve the resolution of the use of beginning fund balance 2024-2025 budget.
So moved.
Don?
Second?
Thank you, Alexandra. Is there a discussion regarding this? Discussion? Laura Lee, please call the roll. Oh, Denise? Now, the hundred dollars? That was item...
That's...
It perplexed me as well when I saw it on there. That is Fund, from Fund 23, Student Activities. It's not unusual to have, that's a fundraising account or student activities account, self-funded athletic programs and student activity funds. So we hold those funds from fundraising for a variety of programs. We get estimated budgets that we think are going to be spent. And this is one item that was just slightly, for the plan next year, 25, I'm sorry, 2024-25, the expenditures were, expenditures were a hundred dollars more than the anticipated or estimated revenue that's going to be coming in. Really a negligible amount, but I would like to avoid having such a small dollar amount for the board's consideration in the future. But that's what caused that.
Any other questions? Discussion? Okay. Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd?
Aye.
Denise Chapman?
Aye.
Amy Doran? Don Kirk?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam?
Aye.
Nancy Rumfelt?
No.
The motion passes five to one. Gordon? Thank you very much for taking so much time in preparation for all of this. That was a lot. And I know there have been a lot of questions that came into us as well.
Thank you for the board's consideration.
7.5 is the approval of the New Vision Charter School Amendment Number Two. Sent to Laura Lee. Haven't we seen this before?
Yes. Good evening, Madam President, Board Education, Doc Schaefer, Todd Piccone, Chief Operations Officer. Yes, we have seen this, I think, three other times before, or two of this, will be the third. Tonight, you'll see there is one strike of neighbors in New Vision Charter within a half-mile radius is being struck from the agreement. The New Vision Board has signed this agreement. And so this is the kind of the final language approval that we had updated from last time. And just a little background, in their current contract, there is not any provisions or contract language that really goes through how an armed personnel on school site is to be treated. So this really defines how someone on site that is armed goes through the training that is required, the notification, the state statute. So all the pieces which we fall under, it, excuse me, details out for them what they are to do with armed personnel on site. So their current contract basically said you'll follow state statute. There's more to it, so this goes into more depth. The reasoning why that this has started and now coming back again.
Do we have any questions over this? Okay.
The fact that we have looked at this before, and now it's coming back again, has our legal team had the opportunity to review this? Because this is essentially a new policy then? They didn't previously have a firearms policy, but they do now? Is that what I'm understanding you to say?
Correct. Within their current agreement, I don't have it with me, but it is a one-sentence agreement on safety and security that notes, you know, they will follow state statute. But there was no definition on what to do if they want to hire someone that is armed. So this defines what to do.
So the policy then now exists more as a policy rather than just a single sentence?
Yes. Well, it's a contract, it's in the contract. So this amendment will attach to their current contract.
Okay. It's important to me that our legal team has had the opportunity to look at this. And if they have, and if they approve it, then I'm fine with this.
Yes. They look and actually drafted it for this, this New Vision and Loveland Classical.
That's great. Thank you.
Any other questions? I will take a motion to approve the New Vision Charter School Amendment Number Two.
I'll move.
Second?
Nancy and Stu. Is there any further discussion? Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd?
Aye.
Denise Chapman?
Aye.
Amy Doran? Don Kirk?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam?
Aye.
Nancy Rumfelt?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. All right. 7.6 is the approval of the School Resource Office, the SRO contract agreement.
Yes. Thank you again, Madam President and Board Education. Tonight, we are contemplating the IGA for the SRO agreement for Laramo County and Loveland Police Department. As previously brought forward, we went through the contents, what changed, and this is really the process then to get to hopefully approval. More for discussion tonight. I just wanted to make the board aware of some recent conversation that took place in a public meeting in the June 11 city council meeting. As we may have heard, the city's going through some budget discussions. In those budget discussions, there was talks about, or scenarios about how they can reduce their budget. So you'll see attached to the memo tonight is just a slide from the presentation that says one option could be to, let me just read it here, reduce or eliminate the key programs, including SRO and Summit Stone Correspondent Program. So I'm just bringing that forward as board awareness. The recommendation is still to move forward with the approval of the IGA. There has been no formal discussion between, you know, the different staffs of planning for this, but just high-level awareness and scenarios presented in a public meeting for the city to work through their budget issues. So at this time, we'd recommend still moving the IGA forward for approval. And then we will keep the board apprised if there is any further detailed discussions that come out of this. The general timeline would be towards the end of 2024, is when the city would take a general motion on whichever, whichever direction they see fit.
Wouldn't necessarily impact us this next year.
I can't say that for sure. What I do know is, starting in August, we do need an agreement in place because we're moving forward with the plans, just as if we, as we have it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So with that being said, we're signing a one-year contract with both the, or what, that's in front of, what we're voting on, for both the county and the city. And so really, we'd be talking about this logically coming the next time we have a contract, unless they try to, you know, come to us in between contracts to change it, correct?
Correct. So if there was, to play out, if there was a change recommended by the city, we would then go into more of a contract negotiation with termination, cancellation policies that are within the current contract.
And what is the landscape like for other places with SROs? Because I know that there's a variety, but the norm is either not paying for it or splitting costs the way we do, right?
Correct. Our surrounding districts are either similar to what we pay or no cost to districts.
Okay. So there, would, are there examples where districts pay for the entire SRO program?
I'm not aware. I'm aware that, you know, around us, there, yeah, districts not paying full, but half or less.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Questions? Nancy?
To follow up on what Don was asking, I did read in the IGA that there is the whole paragraph about termination. So they can terminate before the one year is up. And so I know that that would trigger us going back into negotiations. Would it impact only, like, very, a very small part of our 24-25 year if it were to come about?
Yeah, I could assume, but yes, because we're going basically through this first semester with an intact contract. You know, with the general timeline that we've heard would be towards the end of '24, would then start in '25. So I've assumed that it would be towards the latter part of '25. But again, that's an assumption without knowing exactly the different timelines the city's working on.
Right. Okay. I would just hope that, I mean, every government entity has a core purpose, and the city has its core purpose, which is safety, security, basic utilities. And they are responsible, along with their police department, for keeping all citizens safe. along with their police department for keeping all citizens safe, including our students. So I would be very disappointed if they were to take this extreme path.
Other questions?
I do have one. We already have alternatives, right? There, we're not just dealing with one law enforcement, in fact, we're looking at two agreements already, right?
Correct.
We have, we will absolutely be making sure that our students have safety and security, no matter what, and LPD does, right?
Correct, I mean, our charge is to protect our staff and students just as safety and security does, so yes, what that looks like, I'm not prepared to talk about, but, um, yes, that's, that's the mission, the mission.
Okay, thanks.
Knowing that the other partner in this is the Laramie County Sheriff's Office, which, um, takes care of the SRO duties for the birth at schools, um, shall I assume that there is no hiccup in regard to negotiations with them in regard to the, uh, existence of the IGA, et cetera, that it's, uh, pretty solid in terms of their support and our support of the agreement?
That is correct, yeah, there is no, yeah, no hiccup, really on either sides, you know, both entities at the staff levels have, you know, are pursuing the agreement as if normal, so, but that is correct, Laramie County's, there is no issues.
More questions? I will take a motion to approve the School Resource Officer Contract Agreement.
So moved.
Dawn?
Second.
And Denise. Dawn and Denise. Are, is there any further discussion? Hey Laura Lee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran. Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessam.
Aye.
Nancy Runfeld.
Aye.
Motion, motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our discussion items. Eight point one is, um, facility use and pool rate update.
Yes, good evening again, Madam President and Board Education, uh, tonight, we have a trio, uh, performing, um, so as in every year. I'm hoping.
Yeah, yeah, I was looking through the.
Yeah, well, here we go, um, I know, every year, we update the board on, uh, facility rate uses, usage, facility rates and the use of those, so tonight is a, uh, update on that, there's not board approval, but just awareness for the board and community that, um, we're going through this process again. As a reminder, we started these presentations about three years ago, going through this process, so this is, um, the, uh, one for this year. So I will first invite Kristin Batigi up to talk about the facility part.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer, I'm Kristin Batigi, Director of Operations, thanks for having us here tonight. First to talk about the Strive 2025 Connection, uh, focus area number two, the two-way communication, and, um, focus area four, stewardship of resources. So our buildings and grounds are important community and district assets. Um, we hold a number of events within our facilities, not only district events, as well as those community events every year. So through the use, partnerships are strengthened, communications ongoing, um, and so periodic rate changes allows to be good stewards of our resources. So as Todd mentioned, this is kind of that third year, we started this in June of 2022, and we use the CDE School Facilities Cost Calculator to determine what the rate should be, which are based on utility costs as well as maintenance costs and a number of factors, it's pretty extensive through that. So the cost to operate certain spaces is high enough that we can't reasonably recover those costs, and several of our rates are well below market average and need to be raised, and then also labor rates need to be increased based on salary increases for district employees. So we're just continuing those rates that we had projected back three years ago for the facility use. So within here, the, um, these three spaces are what we're looking for, the 23, 24 change is highlighted there, the reason that it's a range, you know, two fifty to five dollars an hour is just because, you know, an elementary cafeteria or multipurpose space looks different than a gym, and we also have different types of groups that rent our spaces, including nonprofit youth, nonprofit, um, adult, and then also commercial renters. So the proposed changes you can see on the far right for this year. And then also, as mentioned, the labor rates as well, so event staff and nutrition services staff, so the 23, 24 rate is listed there, and then the 24, 25 rate is on the far right. Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Nicole Byrd, our, um, Aquatics Facility Manager, and then following that will be Amy Gerhart, um, for the Next Steps Program.
Good evening, Board of Education, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, um, again, my name is Nicole Byrd, I am the Aquatics Facilities Manager for the District. I've been in this position actually 22 years, I kind of counted those off, um, the other day, and, um, I've seen a lot of changes over the years, and I first want to say thank you, um, and the District for providing such an amazing opportunity, um, to the swimming community of of Northern Colorado, it's not just Loveland, but it truly is Northern Colorado, and it's not just the competitive swimmers, it's our kids that are learning how to swim, where we see, um, one of the largest, um, deaths among small children is due to drowning. And today alone at Mountain View and, um, Thompson Valley, we taught over a hundred kids, um, how to swim today, so thank you for that. When we opened the Mountain View Aquatic Center, uh, back in 2000, 2002, actually, um, I was brought into this position, we didn't have a whole lot of oversight, um, with the current staff, so I came in and I kind of started to build a business, I per se, um, with the goal of, um, creating enough revenue to cover expenditures, and that worked really, really well for a long, long time. And as, um, as staff rates has increased and electricity costs increased, um, we started to see that those expenditures were oftentimes or sometimes outperforming my revenues. So we're here now to, um, start to create a more balanced opportunity for the aquatic centers, um, and slowly increase some, some, some of our rates, um, and really across the board, so it's not just gonna affect, um, one segment, but we're gonna do a small increase to hopefully, um, build better facilities and create a safe environment for everybody. So you'll see here, here's some of the comparison, um, rates that I, um, was able to get, um, comparing to some of the other facilities or other, um, organizations, um, with, within Northern Colorado, which included, um, the VMAC Aquatic Center, which is a school district facility down in the Denver area, as well the City of Fort Collins and the City of Loveland. So you'll see that I do have listed there each of our, um, facilities, the Dick Houston Aquatic Center at Thompson Valley High School, Loveland High School Pool, and the Mountain View Aquatic Center, um, at Mountain View, and then you'll see VMAC Epic, and I included Cheyenne Mountain there as well. So you'll see what, um, our current rates are, and we list those as per lane per hour, that's a standard in the aquatics business of how you, um, charge rental rates, our lifeguarding staff, and then our swim meet fees, which are our large events where we can of often draw six, 700 participants, um, in a weekend. So you'll see our per hour fees there, um, and how that looks across, across the board. And then our next, um, next slide here shows our current rates, what we have those proposed, um, rate changes for the upcoming school year, um, including, um, lane rentals and, um, swim meet fees. Now, our current, um, the current proposal, um, to increase fees occurs over all areas, not just these as well, so there would, there are other, other impacts, but these are the ones that we're, we'll see the most, um, clearly. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Sure, absolutely.
Are the lifeguard stuff, is that, are those, it looks like those aren't changing?
Um, it would be a 10%, so I think it goes from 20 to 22.
22, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Actually, I have a question, Nicole, related to your part of the presentation and also the facility rate review, um, and I apologize for not submitting this as a question when I submitted some of the others, but it didn't occur to me until just now. So beginning with, for the facility rate review, um, and I don't expect, Kristin, that you're gonna know this offhand, but could you provide the board with the amount generated during the 2023, 24 school year? And then also how the money that is brought in is used? Does it go right back into those facilities, or is it used in a different way? And then Nicole, I basically have the same question for you then, the, um, amount of money that's generated through the swimming program and how that money is then used and then reinvested in the program? And again, I apologize, I would have submitted as a question, but it didn't occur to me until you were talking.
No problem, and I can answer that to a certain extent, I don't have the numbers, um, exactly, but that's certainly information that we can provide, and that, though, that revenue that comes in is then split between different departments, basically, some of that does go back to the school, um, there are some that covers that, those utility costs, of course, labor, that goes to cover the labor, so that's split out, so we can get more detailed information for you on that.
And I didn't bring my specific revenues, um, into, in with me tonight, I actually had them sitting at my desk and walked away, but with the aquatics, all of the revenues that come in go directly to the expenditures and the support of the aquatics facilities.
All right, anybody else have questions on that? Thank you so much for coming in. Yes, we appreciate it, and now we're gonna learn about nursery rate increase. Realize that you were having.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer, um, thank you for letting me be here in Lamb Caro's absence, he is, um, at a fellow's program out at UCLA right now, so, um, first of all, I kind of would like to talk to you about First Steps, I don't know if you even know that this program exists, it is, um, a nursery program that we have, a daycare program for infants and toddlers in our district, um, it was originally created for students and, um, teen parents and and their children, and to support them, um, not only in providing some childcare for them, but helping them to learn how to be parents. And, um, it was funded primarily through grants, but with the district's support, and it was housed at Ferguson High School. Over time, we've seen fewer and fewer, um, students who are having children, which is a good thing, um, I think with lots of education and support of of young children and really children, um, teen parents. So, um, we now, um, with the, um, re, I guess, renewal of Stansberry into an early childhood center, um, the First Steps Program has been moved over to be part of our program there, um, which has really been a lovely joining, I think, of of the two programs, because students and families really have a seamless transition, oftentimes from that daycare program into our early childhood preschool program. And I just have to say, they have an amazing, amazing program there, they're right across the hall from me, so I get lots of opportunities to observe and to support and, um, hear from parents how wonderful, um, they feel about this program. So, um, right now, we serve a few, a couple of parents, teen parents, but mostly it's staff, um, that have, um, children in our, in our district, so, um, a lot of times, it's a staff member, a teacher, an admin person that has a new baby and needs childcare, and then they bring them to that program there. And so it's not just me saying this, but every year, we survey the parents, what, what could we do better, what's, you know, what do you like about the program? So I just want to share a couple of comments so that you can understand that. So I've taken out names and genders, just to, to protect the privacy of these people. Every single parent surveyed gave positive, um, feedback, but these are just a few comments. I could not be more pleased with this program, I feel strongly that my child would not have the language skills, letter mastery, and numbers to 20 mastery without attending this program. This infants and toddlers, so. There is no other place I want to take my child, I trust this team implicitly, they are incredible. I will be forever grateful to the entire staff for taking such great care of my child, I feel blessed and fortunate that we were able to send them there. So, just to say, it's a wonderful program. This program has been grant funded in the past through the Buell Grant, um, and also the United Way Community Impact Grant, however, unfortunately, over time, um, those funds have reduced significantly, so originally, like in 2014, um, we received $15,000 from the Buell Foundation, then over a period of 21 to 23, it went down to 10,500, and now we're looking at 5,250. So it's a pretty significant, um, decrease, which is why we're saying we really have to increase our rates, um, a little bit, just to support the program, to make sure that we can continue to offer this, um, and of course, labor rates are gonna continue to rise, um, and so we're gonna just need to, in order to keep up, so. We have looked at, um, local programs that have, um, in the district or in the, in the community, um, and what they charge, and so, and we've looked at what we charge and what they charge and tried to compare, next slide shows that. So our current rate, um, for an infant is $65, we're proposing a $15 increase daily, um, across the board, so for a full day, half day infant or toddler. Um, I should say, we only serve 20 children, so 10 in each, in each classroom at this point. So, do you have any questions?
Questions?
So grant funding has gone down, are there other grants to chase, or is this going to have to be a?
We're always looking.
Okay.
We're always looking for other, um, grant opportunities, um, at this point, I don't know that that's an option, um, but there are. So I know in the past, um, it has come up about early head start, um, early head start requires, um, specific qualifications for the staff members to have, um, none of our staff members currently meet those qualifications, so we would be looking at a complete staff turnover, which is part of the quality of our program now, is the people, right? And so as you heard my comments, we would kind of hate to do that and have to lose some quality staff.
Yeah.
It's not to say that that's not something we should look into in the future, um, but that is one of the kind of barriers at this point.
Anybody else have question? And Nancy, did I miss you? Oh.
Amy?
Yes.
Are there any Thompson District Funds that are, um, used to help parents who need financial help with affording the nursery program? District funds themselves?
I'm gonna defer to the financial guru here.
You knew I couldn't wait to jump in the fray here anyway with, uh, a couple of comments, so, no, there's no subsidies, um, in that nature, of that, of that nature for the program. Um, I do want to point out to the board and the community that these are outside of the general fund, this is handled through Fund 29, which is fee supported, so all of these items you've heard about, facility rentals, aquatics facilities rentals, First Steps Program, on page 36 of the budget document, you can see the expected revenue and expenditures for each one of those programs, so, um, outside of the gen, all of this outside of the general fund intended, as Nicole said, to operate on a, as an, as an enterprise, uh, a, a break even, um, out worst proposition, but, uh, no, to answer your question, no general fund dollars being used to support subsidies.
Okay, a follow-up question then for either Amy or for both of you, are you anticipating then that in the coming year with the, the, uh, current funding from the Buell Foundation being cut in half, is that correct, that your numbers will drop significantly?
Um, I think, we think that with the increased intuition, that we'll be able to, to still break even, but it, yeah. Does that make, did I answer your question? Maybe I didn't understand.
No, maybe I didn't ask the question very, very carefully. If the subsidy, if the additional financial assistance from the Buell Foundation isn't available to the degree that it has been before, are you anticipating that you'll have fewer students, because how will the parents? Because how will the parents who are struggling to pay for this, pay for this? That's the question I intended to ask.
Okay, well, I think I can answer that. I would say that our rates, the increase in the rate that we're asking for is pretty typical across the board for anywhere in our community as far as what you would pay for childcare. It's in line with what we would see other places, so at other centers and those kinds of things. So, it is very expensive to put your child in childcare these days, but it's not, we're not asking for more than anyone else in our community. Does that make sense?
And I wasn't suggesting that you were. I was just actually curious as to whether you thought there would be a drop in enrollment.
I don't believe we anticipate that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I have one, but it is escaping me, so give me just a second. It'll come back. Oh, are most of the children in the program actual children of Thompson employees? Or are there some from outside as well, would you say?
So we offer it to teen parents first.
Teen parents first?
And then district employees. And then if we still have openings, then we open it up to community. At this point, I don't believe there are any outside.
Do you have like a waitlist?
We do have a waitlist. A pretty lengthy waitlist.
That's what I wondered. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Gordon. Thank you. Are you, is that it, Todd? Are we done? Okay, thank you. Thank you to everybody that helped with that. That was a nice performance of variety. All right, 8.2, 2023-2024. Gosh, Gordon, supplemental budget.
Thank you, Madam President. If the board or the community doesn't know, I'm Gordon Jones, Chief Financial Officer for the district. This item is just a discussion or an update item regarding supplemental budget. The overall budgeting process for the district involves three stages. And the district does not have to participate in all of them, but has to participate in the first one, which is the adoption of a budget prior to the beginning of the new fiscal year. So that's what was presented to the board earlier. Statute says by January 31st. Up till January 31st, the district has the option of presenting an amended budget for the board's consideration. Typically, I do that, staff does that each year because the adjustments that we make when we set the budget, the original budget, at the beginning of the year in June, it starts July 1st, we don't know what our ending fund balance is going to be in the, all the funds until we wrap up all of the financial work and the audit for the year. So that's one adjustment that's brought forth to the board. The other is our funded pupil count. We have estimates on what that will be, but when we have the October count, then when we get to January, we have the ability to know what that certified count is. The third option or third facet that the board has at their disposal or consideration is a supplemental budget. And that's after the amended budget on January 31st, until the books are closed for that particular year. So, we, our fiscal year ends June 30th, and we will keep the books open for two months, look at invoices that come in. If we receive purchases, we can accrue those costs back to the year that's in question. So the supplemental process is typically done in June. That's when it's been brought in front, brought forth to the board in the past. What the recommendation is from staff is there's two or three key items that we don't have final closure on at this point with the end of the year rapidly approaching. And it's always a bit of an estimate or a, I don't like the word "guess" in accounting work, but it's an estimate that we use of what those supplemental budget entries or budget items might be. This year, one of those items is the early childhood program. When I say this year, I'm talking 2023-24. We were still seeking some clarification from CDEC, the Colorado Department of Early Childhood, especially on the funding for special education preschool students that we've serviced. So, there's some questions around that. There's some questions around capital projects that are taking place that we still don't have final resolution, which again, isn't unusual because those projects a lot of times take place over the summer for the previous fiscal year. And the last item is grants. There's several larger grants. Grants are complicated from a timing standpoint because most, if not all, of the grants we have have different fiscal years than what the fiscal year of the district is. And it's not that the district is July 1st through June 30th, and all the other grant, all grants are under a different time period. They are, the grants are under a variety of different time periods. So it could be October 1st through September 30th. It could be January 1st through December 31st. The grants are all very unique in that regard. And trying to make sure we've captured all of the expenses, the appropriate expenses, in the right period is what the intent of the supplemental budget is. Another very important consideration is staff does not have the ability, without resolution adoption by the board, to transfer dollars from one fund to another. So, an example would be the general fund. We appropriate dollars to capital projects, which is Fund 43. And on the one page in the budget document, you'll see transfers out of the general fund and transfers in to other funds. The district staff does not have the ability to do that without board authorization, board resolution. So, that's another consideration to make sure that we have the final, most transparent, most accurate numbers possible. The recommendation is to have staff, likely me, return in front of you in August or September, when we'll have a much clearer picture of what that would be. And we may not have to do anything, but it would be at my request and my recommendation that you allow me to return in August or September with more information than I have today for a supplemental, potential supplemental budget.
Forward to having you back. Any questions? Alexandra?
So, this may be a really stupid question, but what's, what's the purpose of, or what purpose does like a supplemental budget serve after the budget year has already over?
Because we are still making journal entries. We can make adjustments to the results. There's very specific guidelines that we have to follow. Meaning, an example would be if we have purchased, purchased an item. So, I will use computers as an example. We have an outstanding order of computers. We've done the PO, it's within the budget for the 23-24 year. We are hoping to have those received by June 30th. We have to have them received by June 30th to count them as a 23-24 expenditure. We can pay for them after the end of the fiscal year in July or August, provided we have received them by June 30th. And we call that, we accrue that cost back to the 23-24 year. That would be one example of trying to make adjustments. Quite honestly, the biggest consideration is if we, one of the items that is open for the 23-24 year is the board made, has approved, duly approved, had presentations on use of outperformance from prior years, it's sitting in reserve balance to use that for capital projects. But we haven't appropriated, we haven't adjusted that on the amended budget. I think the approval came after the amended budget, but we haven't, but it's still within the 23-24 year. So if we have to transfer dollars from the general fund reserve balance to Fund 43, we have to have board authorization or board resolution to do a transfer like that.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, 8.3, Strive 25.
So, good evening, Madam President, members of the board. It is, it's hard to believe that back in 2019-2020, the then Board of Education approved Strive 2025, which was our, is our five-year strategic plan. And as we approach the 2024-25 school year, that begins year five of our five-year strategic plan. One of the directions, directives of the Board of Education was to ask staff to provide a yearly end-of-the-year update summary on some of the high-level accomplishments in each of our areas of Strive 2025, as well as forecast what we want to continue working on going into the upcoming school year. So this evening, I will be joined by my colleagues on Cabinet, who will be illuminating for you the various accomplishments and successes that we've enjoyed this school year, as well as forecast really our working priorities for next year. If you go to the next slide, please. As a reminder to the Board of Education and community, Strive 2025 is anchored in four key success areas, and these would be student achievement, supportive and inclusive culture, human talent, and stewardship of resources. So I hope you've seen, we anchor all of our work to these four areas. Every presentation that is brought forward to the Board and the community is aligned with our work of Strive 2025. We've also worked hard, as per suggestions by the Board of Education, to try to put this into plain speak, and not like boilerplate language, but really apply how there is a connection to the work in clear English. So, tonight, our members in my Cabinet will be presenting. And because Strive 2025 and the four areas really transcend all departments, we shuffle the deck a little bit, and so I have individuals who are a little bit outside of their area to provide an overview on the different areas. So, our first person is Kelly Sane, who's our Chief Technology Officer, and she's going to be talking about student achievement.
Thank you, Dr. Schaefer, Madam President and Board members. Kelly Sane, Chief Technology Officer. I have the pleasure to talk about the accomplishments of student achievement. So currently, we are providing summer programming for our students in K-8 level, which is over 900 students are participating in different summer programming. Our graduation rates are continuing to increase for the sixth year in a row, including class of 2024, implementation of our English and Arts curriculum through 609, including work on common assessments across the district. We have implemented best practices in math in our, both our elementary and our secondary grades. And we have seen the district-wide increasing in growth, in growth and achievement in our I-ready end-of-year scores for math and reading. And we have also seen a district-wide increase in writing opportunities for our students.
Good evening, Madam President and Board Education. I have the pleasure to talk about the accomplishments in Area 2, inclusive and supportive culture. A couple of areas we've already actually hit tonight, so I won't go in order. But when you look at digital access for students, for both summer access and then the seniors keeping devices, continued growth in collaboration in mental health, the live training and for safety and security, the addition of additional correspondent unit, and then enhanced family interpretation. Also looking at school-based devices that'll continue to grow this area. So, those are some of the pieces that have accomplishments in Area 2. Mr. Gordon Jones is next.
I'm still Gordon Jones, and I believe still employed as Chief Financial Officer of the district. I have the opportunity to provide some updates on Focus Area 3, which is human talent. One of the real milestones that was reached this year at the board's encouragement, direction, as we talked through negotiations on a, on a cost that is really 80% to 85% of our budget from salaries and benefits standpoint. So receiving the board input and feedback in executive sessions, giving direction in negotiations, leading us to be able to work with the Teachers Association to move the starting teacher pay to $53,300 and classified salaries starting at $18 an hour. Both very important milestones to keep us competitive, if not in the lead in the district or in the area with some of the other districts. We also have implemented a modern health platform that's available to support employees' mental health needs. We have obviously a focus on students' needs, but this was a, from a human talent standpoint, being able to have a resource available to staff as well. There is a aspiring leaders course that has been created for classified staff. I mentioned this quite some time ago to the board that I still haven't been invited to present to this group, but I'm sure it's just an oversight. But really a popular program. We've had good results, good enrollment in that class. Really rewarding and very encouraging to see employees wanting to learn more about the district, wanting to advance their lives, their careers. And then, the Human Resources Department has hosted four events this year, recruiting events for both licensed and classified positions. With, while we always would like better results, some is better than none, and those have been very well-received as well.
Phil Seaver, Chief Human Resources Officer. I have the honor to talk about stewardship of resources. So we have five accomplishments. Completed a community survey and community meetings for potential bond and special levy initiative. It's always great to have the community involved. Obtained a $2 million, that's correct, $2 million grant for a TCC expansion project. I think that's pretty awesome, what we can offer students. That's correct, $2 million. Implemented new staff-student device replacement cycle and moved to a systemic approach for one-on-one tech-for-all. So great job by ITS. Reviewed and selected new audit partner for the district to conduct annual financial review. And last but not least, further refine individual department budget templates to more accurately reflect initiatives for the coming fiscal year. That's Mike Kelsman.
All right, Mike Kelsman, Chief Communications Officer. So now that we've kind of detailed some of our key accomplishments in each of the focus areas, we wanted to kind of highlight a few bulleted items, specific items on our work list for the upcoming school year around this. So, we'll start with a continued implementation of our English Language Arts curriculum materials in grades 6 through 9, as well as writing, and this will be across all of our content areas and all of our grades. You'll notice we have several professional development items on here as well. So we'll start with a continued professional development in math practices across the district, as well as a continued professional development series in professional learning communities. Our school leadership teams will be receiving PD in restorative solutions for student behavior. And there will also be professional development for our school staff and administrators in the areas of equitable, diverse, and inclusive learning environments within the district. We have a series of digital learning cohorts, as well as some ITS professional learning events that are on slate for the coming school year. Moving along, we have a continued expansion to our interpretation and our translation services at both the school and the district level. This is an area that's been growing a lot over the past couple of years. And in particular, there's been a significant growth, and we project there to be also another significant growth in our American Sign Language service that we provide for families this year. Continued work on our accessibility projects throughout the district. This is the website primarily in our electronic media, but it also goes down into documents that are used within the district that are distributed for community use as well. Continued focus on increasing our paraprofessional retention rates through training and professional development. An increase in our professional development opportunities for all three of our employee groups. And then the last one I'll highlight is the development of a property tax calculator for a potential bond and a special levy if it's approved by the board. And this calculator will be making available on our websites that people will be able to go in there and calculate what the possible impact of those items would be, again, if they were passed. And with that, are there any questions you have for me or any of my colleagues on what we presented tonight?
And before we get to questions, one of the purposes of bringing this to you now in June is that, you know, believe it or not, we continue working throughout the summer, especially the senior leadership. And so, we like to take this time to illuminate for you And so we like to take this time to illuminate for you some of the things that we're working on, but we also ask you to highlight things that you would like us to be working on. And so we can take the summer as our senior leadership team to plan and work. We, we actually do a retreat over the summer as well, where we do a very deep dive on STRIVE 2025, as well as our equity work and other priorities within the district. So we, we really just wanted to create some time and space to, to get your feedback as well.
Comments or suggestions for what we, let's start over here.
Thank you for this, and I know that this is just very high level, right? I mean, there's a lot of work that's going on, and we'd be here for days and days if we were to even just dive into one department, let alone all of the different departments. I think that the one thing I would just raise up, I heard some of it in tonight's presentation, but when we talked in our study session, there were quite a few things around really addressing these, these needs that we've had that just need some special attention, right? So thank you for including what you have. Thank you for taking to heart the things that we've given feedback on in the last couple of months. And I would just look, as you are doing planning this summer, to really also look at what else we need to be doing as we carry into next year to address some of these big things that we've had in front of us. I know you will be. I just feel like we have to say that part, so since I got to go first, I'll be the one to say it first. So thank you.
Not a question, but a comment. Dr. Schaefer, this also supports your goal of keeping the board informed of the accomplishments of the district. And for the benefit of those who are still in the room or those who are watching or listening at home, that's one of the goals that the board has encouraged Dr. Schaefer to have, is to make sure that on a regular basis, he keeps us informed of how the district is doing in terms of meeting goals and the next steps, of course, are also very important. So thank you to the cabinet who helped Dr. Schaefer accomplish what he is supposed to accomplish.
The only thing I would like to suggest is that, I mean, there's a lot on the list of what we want to do next type of things, but it's a real big list, and it's easy to lose track of the depth if it's such a big list. So focus on one or two at a time versus all of them at once, and go deeper, please, so that we know where we are, and that will help us know what our questions are too.
I have just a couple of things. The first one, I know you guys all be surprised to hear me say this, but on the third grade reading, I know that there's mention in there of growth for various grades, but I know that in STRIVE 2025, the reading proficiency of third grade was really stressed, and it would be nice to see like actual progress of proficiency, not growth, but proficiency. And then on the behavior, I, that belongs, I know that's part of the inclusive and supportive environment, and I know that that restorative part is part of that, but it would be nice, to your point about figuring out what things we really want to focus on so that we can go a little deeper and have more, more information. I think we've heard the last couple of times that there's a lot of issues with that, and so I would like to see a little bit more of how we're going to address that.
Yeah, I agree with that and what others have said, maybe both Barb and Nancy have kind of dawned to some degree as some, you know, a little more specific information. All of the sort of vague, vague next steps are nice, but maybe after you have your, have your retreat, have a little bit more of a specific plan about some of those things.
My second or third or, you know, whatever the number here is around, you know, specificity in these plans, behavior, it's a hard, sticky, multifaceted problem, but we know it's not going to go anywhere over the summer, and our teachers are talking to us, parents are talking to us, and having, you know, a fresh start in the fall is really an opportunity to send a message, a direction, a, you know, that this is important and that, you know, here are the things that we're going to be doing, and that it is not just a school problem. This is a societal problem. It's not just Thompson, and how collectively as a community can we all work together to have students that once they're no longer Thompson students, are going to be successful operating and functioning in the world and not just bullying their way through life or feeling victimized regardless of, you know, where they go. So please take that time to think about our individual learners, the experiences they're having, and, you know, the kind of society we're living in and technology changes, you know, throw everything in there. And let's come back confident that this is an important priority for the district, and we have some strategies to go after it.
All right, thank you, cabinet members. We appreciate your, for sharing with us. We have one report, it's Family Pod Report. I would like, and I have asked this because I asked it last time, and I heard from Stu but not anybody else, is to be thinking about our August 5th retreat as far as topics, and ask you to consider the topics that would be important for us as a school board that we need to think about. But then also, I want you to also think about ongoing topics that have coming back and keep coming back and keep coming back. So I, I want an email or something from you so that Dr. Schaefer and I have a place to start our agenda for that, that date. Okay? Otherwise, you won't see us until the first part of August because July is off for us. Everybody enjoy their time, and you guys get a lot of work done.
While we're on vacation.
While we're on vacation. All right, the meeting's adjourned.